Testing. It's still a little loud. Testing, how does that sound guys? You hear that?
Yeah.
Oh, the owl. Councilor Dyke, can you hear us? Maybe not.
Recording is progress.
Councilor Dyke, were you able to hear us on the... Across the Zoom?
Can you hear us in Zoom land? Just think about it.
This meeting is being recorded.
Oh wow, I would turn that off.
She cannot hear us. Are we still using the owl? To pick up the audio?
Not the owl.
You're really quiet.
What if I turn this up a little bit?
I can hear you a little bit better now.
That better, is that better?
Yeah.
Too much. Sorry. Is that a little better?
Yeah.
Go ahead Mayor King.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all as we work through some technical difficulties. We have brand new microphones for the first time. Going to take a little bit of getting used to, but hopefully everyone here and on Zoom will be able to communicate a little bit better. It is seven o'clock, so if everyone's ready, I will call to order the February 7th meeting of the Amity City Council. Please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tasha, will you take your role please?
Councilor Melissa Borcas.
Present.
Councilor David Gerber.
Present.
Councilor Philip T.
Here.
Councilor Ella Thompson.
Present.
Councilor Emily.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here. Thank you, we'll start off this evening with the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We'll move into citizen comments and questions. This is an opportunity to present items not on the regular agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start off this portion with the Amhill County Sheriff's Office report.
Uh, we had the, so we're still, you guys want to get in?
December.
Stats wise, everything was about right. We've had more traffic stops. A lot of the rocks, a lot of stuff. Which we need to. See. So, I don't have anything today. Nothing that's going to make CNN, but uh, yeah. So, putting it out of town. Good thing, I would encourage, uh, talking to people in the community. If there's an issue at the house and we're thinking like, you know, traffic, what is it possible?
Okay. Any questions for the Sheriff's Office? I just have one and it comes in the form of like a citizen comment to me. I don't know, I recommended they reach out to YCOM with a message for you guys, I don't know if that happened. But I just said for the record, I would share it. And the concern is speeding on Goucher Street. I don't know. If that's been relayed to you, but some of my neighbors are concerned, especially in the dip. Cars just going really fast in, really fast out. There's very little visibility. So I just said that during this portion of the meeting, I would share that with you. Make sure it was on the radar.
Yeah, uh, Jellison and I had some people talking about Jellison.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, I'm there, that's outside. It's amazing. And you know, it's local people and so usually the more traffic stops. And it's not that they want to happen, so, but that's, that's good enough, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a dig report this evening? I'll just quickly share that the Amity Dig Daffodil Committee has been meeting. The Daffodil Festival will happen on March 30th and they're looking for additional volunteers. So if anyone's interested, I think those upcoming meetings, the next ones, the 16th, they'll be posted to Facebook. But I know that community support would be welcomed. And then I'll also just ask if there's any opposition. In the past, the city has been like an active partner in that with the Downtown Improvement Group. Is there any opposition of us sponsoring a craft table for the kiddos again? Sounds good. Do we have any citizen comments, questions from the audience? And anyone online? Hearing none, we will move on to old business, of which there is none, and right into new business. Our first item is the DLCD Technical Assistance Grant Award. So Nathan had a little bit of background and then presented the agreement. I think everyone got a chance to read over that, Nathan?
Yeah, so the, in October 2023, DLCD hosted the grant cycle. I was able to apply for it. And the project that I applied with was to go through DLCD's periodic review process and update the city of Amity's comprehensive plan. We were awarded that grant of $63,000 to, just to fund technical assistance, right? In the form of a consultant, as well as staff time, you know, communicating with COG and planners. And taking a really good look at the city of Amity's comprehensive plan, whether or not it still meets our current conditions. Considering it was written in 1978, it, a lot of it probably doesn't. And so, taking a look at that, reviewing all of it, and then updating it where necessary. As, as we've talked about previously, and it's pointed out to me by, by several people, this will be definitely a rigorous process. It will be a decent undertaking to, to go through all of the tasks outlined in the grant agreement, including some community visioning, setting up a work plan, taking the time to really like, do a deep dive on our comprehensive plan and then, and then set a plan for updates. And while a, a long and difficult process, I think it will be worthwhile for the city of Amity to go through and, and one that we can tackle.
Is there any questions for staff on that item? So are you feeling pretty confident? In the grant agreement, it really was broken down. Task, you know, assigned timelines. Do you feel good with the support we have internally and externally that we can meet all that criteria and stick with the grant agreement?
I do. Yeah, I kind of expressed, probably made it sound like it was going to be a big hard process. We have a lot of support. DLCD is 100% with us. They're really supportive in the way that they work with communities. We have great support at the COG. They're really excited for this process, excited to see staff at the COG have relayed that they didn't think DLCD would ever give Amity that, this kind of grant. Just because they, the focus of planning, for the most part in the state of Oregon, is on bigger cities. A lot of the little cities can kind of do whatever they want, or not do whatever they want, but aren't required to have as many updates, aren't, they don't have as many requirements on them. And so they also get less state support generally. And so COG staff was surprised to see this grant awarded, but then very excited that it was a strong opportunity for, for Amity to build out a strong comprehensive plan, take a look through its zoning code, make sure everything was up to date, the way that the city wants it to be, to move forward. And hopefully that it can guide other, their work with other cities as well. But yeah, as you noted, the grant agreement, the project proposal, if you will, outlines the tasks very specifically, has a lot of support players, right? And our contact to DLCD, Melissa Arons, has been very communicative and said that if there's anything in there that we don't love or that seems too much, we can give that feedback. So if there's something in there that you're like, oh man, that, that seems like a lot, then I can give that feedback. Or there's also a good chance that, I believe it's task four, or task three, the work program. That work program depends largely upon task one and two, which is the, the community visioning and then kind of the initial review. The comprehensive plan evaluation. And so, we can get through task one and two fairly straightforward. And then that sets us up really well for task three, four, and five to be shaped to it, but for us to also say, this is what we can actually put in our work plan. Right? If that makes sense.
It does, and I'll just elaborate a little bit that there's a lot of statutory requirements for cities over 2,500 people. And so because we fall below that, they're like, well, we're not going to give you much help because we're not requiring you to do it. And so that's how we've made it 30, 40 years without it ever being really touched, other than a few little revisions over the years. I'm also excited for this opportunity to just kind of look at, how can we have this comprehensive plan work for us and work for growth, you know, improvements and growth in Amity in the way that we want to see it, not what they envisioned in 1978? Because, you know, things have played out a lot different. We're not on, you know, not everyone's hoverboarding around. So what maybe they envisioned us living with right now is not what we're in.
Yeah, if I can just, I think we, our goal setting, I felt really strong about our goal setting session, how it really played into like kind of setting up a strategic plan of what we want to accomplish and how we're going to get there. And I think this, this chance to really review our comprehensive plan and then build out a, a a new or updated one, kind of carries that forward in a big way. Gives us, gives us a chance as a city to really say, okay, this is where we want to be in 20, 30 years. And then our strategic plans or our goals setting every year can really tie into, okay, are we reaching, are we headed towards that comprehensive plan?
So any questions, concerns, comments about the agreement itself? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed grant agreement from DLCD for the review and update of Amity's comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion and a second to approve the proposed grant agreement from DLCD for the review and update of Amity's comprehensive plan. Any further? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item of business is the Amity Water Revenue Bond Resolution.
Yeah, we, uh, did you want me to give back, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
We went through this process a couple of months ago, back in December. As we've expended the entirety of the loans for the USDA, the water treatment plant project, the city now has to sell bonds essentially to pay back the loans. And the bonds are the long-term debt. And so this is the second half of that. This is selling bond, a resolution to sell bonds for 4.8 million. And the one thing I will call out, the resolution is staying largely the same, but Holly from USDA has asked that I add in one little section. It was in the other bond, it didn't get included in this one, but it's a requirement from both, right? It's a requirement in both situations, and so she wanted me to add it. Basically, it's a, a section that talks about the requirement for a short-lived asset replacement account. And it just says, "There shall be set aside and deposited in the short-lived asset replacement account, the sum of $63,182 annually. The short-lived asset replacement account shall be used and dispersed only for the purpose of replacing facility assets with an estimated life of less than 15 years. Government concurrence is not required to use the funds in the short-lived asset replacement account for the stated purpose." To clarify a little bit further, it's in both bonds, so it's in the one that we already passed and in this one, but it's not a double requirement. Like, we're not required to do 126,000 a year. They just wanted to stipulate it in the paperwork that in either situation, the city has to have the short-lived asset replacement account and fund it with $63,000 each year.
So that even when one of the bonds is paid off and we're only paying on a single one, all the requirements would stay intact? Any comments or questions? I would just ask that when someone is ready to make a motion, after you read the resolution number, you just add with the entirety of the paragraph concerning short-term asset count included? Because it's not in the resolution within the packet. Do I have anyone willing to make such a motion?
Motion to pass resolution number 2024-1, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of the installment water revenue bond in the principal sum of $4,838,000 to be inclusive of the short-lived asset replacement language.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass resolution number 2024-1, including the entirety of the paragraph concerning the short-term asset account, which is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of the installment water revenue bond in the principal sum of $4,838,000. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to the Water Management and Conservation Plan Agreement. And again, Nathan, I'll let you explain this one. You have the background here.
Yes, so the city of Amity, I believe, were legally required to have a water management and conservation plan. It was called out in the Water Master Plan from 2013. Like in that cap, in that list of capital projects, I knew that it called for redoing the Water Management and Conservation Plan in 2020. It's been a couple of years past that. It's, it's one of those things, how did the staff member, OAW, you explained it, it's, it's a legal requirement, but it doesn't have teeth. And so oftentimes it falls behind a little bit, but it is one of those things that we need to be working towards, because it is legally required for us to have that. It's a specific plan that basically says, talks about how the city of Amity is being efficient with its water use, right? We can only pull so many gallons of water from the river, from the South Amhill River. But this plan tries to track that water and say, okay, if you're pulling 4 million gallons, is all of that 4 million gallons making it to houses, to people, for people to use and drink, or is some of it being lost? How much, how can we minimize that? And so that's kind of the focus of the Water Management and Conservation Plan, is to work towards that. I've, I've been given a good proposal, a relatively cheap proposal, by OAW to, to work on that Water Management and Conservation Plan. And financially, it wouldn't come out of this year's budget, it would come out of next year's budget. But, one approval to begin work on that.
Do you know the timeline for completion? So if, if you got the go-ahead tonight to initiate that, is this something that takes 18 months until we get a final product?
He, he made it sound like it would be, yeah, close, if not 18 months, pretty close. He was anticipating at least next spring.
So is it something that the cost could be split between two fiscal years? Or will it need to be included in the next budget? And then also, do you have an idea on the price? Is it $100,000 or $10,000?
I do, I, I was hesitant to put it in here because I don't know how contract, you know,
Yeah.
putting contracting in a public meeting works. It was $24,500. And so chunk, but a manageable chunk, coming from the water plant. And yeah, but so that would be, yeah, he anticipated next spring, probably March or April. Could go a little longer than that, I don't.
So we'd probably need to get it all in the next fiscal year's budget? Just to be prepared.
Do you, do you know if there's potential for any, adding any infrastructure, like flow meters and stuff? I mean, is sound, or do we have that already in place? Because to know how much we're using and how much is being delivered, it sounds like we might need to, to know that. And I don't know if we have that in place.
So with the improvements that are happening now, we will have those, some additional functioning meters like that, that will give us the data. As of right now, if they assess our entirety of the situation, that would probably be the first thing on their conservation plan is, hey, you need to be.
Yeah.
I mean.
We do have some flow meters. There's meters in multiple places. The, I know staff has had trouble with one specific one that would be replaced by the new upgrades. But we do have meters, I believe there's a meter like on how much water we pull from the river itself. I think the one that they've had trouble with, if I'm remembering correctly, is the meter just past the water treatment plant? So they don't know exactly how much is leaving the water treatment plant. If you will, they know how much is coming in from the river and they can take a guess on how much they're backwashing, how much they're using for operations. And then we do know how much we're selling to customers, right? We have customer meter data. And so you can kind of look at that and say, okay, this is what is, what an average operation would use. This is how much you're pulling in from the river. If that number's 5 million, but the number that people are buying is 3 million, you've got a, a pretty good problem somewhere and you need to find where. So yes, there, it is one of those things where they're going to need a lot of data like that. I don't know that that would necessarily be part of that cost of the plan to install infrastructure like that. But it is something that, if we don't have, they'll recommend that we do. That, that very well could be part of the plan as well to say, okay, you're not tracking it super well from this stretch to this stretch. Put a meter out there and see if you're losing something, because if you're losing something where there's no houses, then you probably have a leak somewhere, you know, between the water treatment plant and the city. Could be, could be recommendations like that, but I don't know that it's necessarily.
And I have found sometimes that is the nature of these plans, is we really hope to get a lot of good information from them. And what we really get in the plan is how to do better, to get more accurate information. I'm not sure if your question got answered though.
I, I think so, I mean, I wasn't sure how much we already had in place and if it would be adequate enough for them to give us the data that we're hoping to get, but it sounds like.
I think it will. I think it will, and um, my contact at OAW is really good about just letting me know if like, if that's not the case. And so I can definitely, as I approach him and talk with him, you know, emphasize, hey, just, if for some, you know, if, after you talk with Greg and you talk about what's in place, you say, we can't give you good numbers right now, let me know, you know, and we can install something and then give it six months and build up some data.
Is that what takes so long on it, just the historical data?
I think that some of it, yeah, I'm not, it's, a lot of these plans tend to take a long time and then, I mean, it's, because they're not going full bore on it almost, right? Like you're kind of drafting, working through partners. I do know that there's also a long section at the end, because they have to submit it to OHA, Oregon Health Authority. You then have to put it out for public comment for 45 days and then review it for 30 days, right? There's a lot of process steps there at the end especially. But yeah, I, a lot of these plans seem, some seem to take a long time, especially at the beginning. And part of it is just gathering information, trying to make sure that you're looking at the whole year and not, not just focusing in.
Any other questions or comments? I just have one more thing to bring up, and it's something else that Tim mentioned, is that while Nathan said that these requirements, legal requirements, don't really have any teeth to them or enforcement, that sometimes when you go out for grants or loans, like our safe drinking water revolving fund loan or different opportunities through the state, they'll ask to see your plan as part of that, and that's their checklist for, you know, bumping you up on the list. And if we say, well, ours is actually outdated and we've been working on it for the last 10 years and that doesn't check their box. So while we might not get, you know, an agency that's coming here and issuing a fine, it could be detrimental in the long run not to just keep up with our responsibilities. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve city staff to begin work and initiate an agreement for a Water Management and Conservation Plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to D Summer Slurry Seal Project. I knew that was going to be a tongue twister. Nathan, feel free to give us the rundown.
Yeah, so shortly before I arrived in June, the city received a Yeah, um, so shortly before I arrived in June, the city received a. Pavement Management Report and Analysis. And so that, in that pavement analysis and report, included several scenarios or several plans. For how the city could maintain, best maintain its road system, uh, given different levels of funding. I've been working through that or or just reviewing that, and under the current funding level. That program suggests a few different slurry seals for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Um, and so I was working with Joel Conder, I believe he came and presented or came and talked at some point. Um, but he has a lot of experience with, uh, street maintenance and keeping a program, a street maintenance program running. Um, as well as like the engineering of streets themselves, and has the ability to, you know, say pretty efficiently what street. Maintenance should look like for different type or different, uh, quality of roads. Um, and so we came up with several streets. Uh, that we would like to see slurry sealed this summer. Um, he did recommend that in order to get the best price, we kind of combine. The two years as much as we can, right? So we went for a a larger project instead of, you know, just doing a forty thousand dollar project one summer. Figured we'd do an eighty thousand dollar project to try to, you know, pull funds from both years. And if we can get it done in June, we'll also be. Better price, more efficient, or more likely to get it done quickly, because most people's. Work gets a lot more tied up come July, because everybody else's fiscal years start, you know, start over, and so then they have maintenance funding again. Um. And so this, uh, I noted in here that depending on timing, if we do a large project, it could require a supplemental budget. Near the end of the fiscal year, um, there is available funding in the street fund itself, right, just in the fund balance. Um. To to do a larger project like this, but I wanted to. Come talk about it and then ask for approval to to pursue essentially an eighty thousand dollar slurry seal project this summer.
Well, this plan cut into, um, the other planned maintenance. So this is a big slurry seal project, but Public Works does other road improvements, uh, not improvements, but you know. Filling potholes or painting those kind of things, does that? Does it eat up so much of the budget that those plans have to stop?
Um, that's a really good question. Um, I attached the budget from last year and this year, just to kind of. Look at it, um, so last year, there wasn't a lot of, like, leftover in the street repair and maintenance. Um, similarly. This year, we're on a much better track, right? Currently, we have forty thousand left in street repair and maintenance, the line item. Um, but. That, you know, if we tried, if we said we're gonna pull forty thousand from this year, forty thousand from next year. That doesn't leave a lot for continued repair and maintenance this year. Um. It is, yeah, so there's a good chance that it would at least reduce some of those operations. Um, in an effort to do better maintenance in over the long term. Right? Instead of filling a bunch of potholes to try to keep some roads in better con- condition. The street fund could use more funding, though.
Uh, I guess the concern that comes to mind is I know that people have been told, oh, the city doesn't really fix these issues. Till after it's done freezing, when the weather warms up, we'll get to some street repair. If we're not going to be able to do that, or I I think when people hear that, they're not expecting. And we we talked about the pros and cons of like maintaining the roads that spruce seal would keep well. Um, but if we get to springtime, when people are used to seeing those things happen, like the winter weather recovery on roads, and nothing happens. That might be an issue as well. Um. I think it makes a lot of sense to gather these projects together and have a bigger impact and do something bigger. But I I don't know, I just think we need to think about that. Because it seems like at this point you would have to tell Public Works, so we have no more money to do anything but this until. After the budget, after the new budget is allocated?
Yeah, um, that could look different depending on how you do your supplemental budget. Instead, you want to say we pull more from the fund balance. Um, then you're reducing your overall fund balance, definitely some trade offs there.
When I think it's important, we have those numbers in front of us, there's not usually a lot left over. But we know we're in a position where more needs to be done. And we discussed as a council that doing these more impactful maintenance proactive type projects. That was kind of the way to get ahead. Um, but what does that look like when come spring, we can't do anything? That's. And that's where we're at.
Um, for reference, the ending fund balance with the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So the one ending in June thirty, um, that ending fund balance is going to be a hundred and nine thousand. Yeah, 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 definitely an estimate. According to the budget.
Right.
If everything plays out well, then.
And I don't have it in front of me, what was the ending fund balance the year before that?
Um, for twenty-two, twenty-three. The estimated ending fund balance was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four. And then for this year's budget, we put fifty thousand, so it kind of stays the same according to the budget. Like I said, some sometimes our expenses go over, um, as they seemed to in last year. The adopted budget for twenty-two to twenty-three showed an ending fund balance of a hundred and eighty-three thousand. But then by the time budget cycle came around, the estimate was actually a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Um, and then, yeah, so this year we have a hundred and nine thousand budgeted or estimated. And then fifty thousand in contingency as well.
I mean, I'm looking to council, but it really just seems like weighing that, but having fifty thousand contingency is also to work with. When we do an assessment in April or May and say, you know what? This contingency needs to be used on Band-Aids, because that's what we need right now. Um, I'm just kind of talking this through, so. Um, Council President Dyke, can you share your thoughts with us?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Um. I'm torn with you on this. I I see the need, but I'm also torn with. Whether we want to put everything into it and then end up, like you said, with nothing left to do those repairs that people are expecting. I don't know. I don't know.
I'm gonna call on everyone. Councilor Marcus.
Um, remind me when we had the last repairs that Greg wasn't impressed with, was that also a slurry seal?
Slurry seal.
That was asphalt pothole repair.
Yeah.
The in- the infrared patching, is that what you're talking about? Like the big squares, um, that have, they've held up okay, but some of them have seemed a little bumpier than, you know, we expected. Yeah, um.
So the slurry seal was something that happened while Rob was here, the last little bit, both at the end of the fiscal year. Which it was something we hadn't, was it right when you came?
So no slurry seals happened, th- those were crack seals.
Crack seals, okay.
So that's when the they went through, that was only like five thousand dollars. Um, they went through several roads and just essentially cleaned out and then put a layer over the cracks. It's, that's the prep work that has to be done before slurry seals. Um, and so. Assuming there's not more cracks, you can take advantage the following year and.
So we would lose out on that investment, like.
A little bit, I mean, it's a small investment, but yeah. We, I mean, and it is fair, you could say, okay, don't go eighty thousand, limit it, you know. I can limit it further, but.
What was? I mean. He's pretty good with giving us all our options and numbers, you know, putting all of that in one. Is there a significant increase in how many streets we can address, or?
Um, man, that's tough to say, and that's tough to say without a bid. Right? Because a lot of it comes down to, the way they estimate it tends to be a certain price per square foot. Which doesn't, you know, I can't change based on how many you do, um, but mobilization tends to be a decent percentage of a project. Um, so if you can get more streets in one go, right, if you're only mobilizing one time instead of two. Um. There are savings there to be had over the long term, but if we're concerned about our fund balance, then. Maybe that's something we kind of have to deal with as we as we build up our program, I don't know.
But if we're also fixing the streets, those are streets that may not need repair, and those fund balances wouldn't be required.
Councilor McCarthy?
I think we need to be pretty aggressive about fixing the streets. We don't want to blow the budget, so like the suggestion of limiting it a bit. But that's been the number one citizen concern for years. And some streets are becoming undrivable, and others are just gonna get worse. I think we need to take advantage. Now that we can, get the ones that need maintenance and repair repaired. And then maybe slate later, the ones that need to be completely ripped out and replaced.
That is, that is one thing to add, is that from the political side or the public perspective, right? The slurry seals will be on roads that seem to be largely fine. Um. Because the slurry seal is meant to, you know, extend the life for another ten to fifteen years, instead of recovering roads that. Almost aren't there anymore.
Yeah, we've got a handful that flat out need to be ripped out and completely repoured, and they're not re- they're not repairable.
Yeah.
But we talked about not hitting them before that drop off. Um, Councilor Shields?
I seem to remember, and this was last year, Mike talking about, we had a big palette of road repair. Or pothole stuff, is that, has that been exhausted, or do we still have a a good amount of that left? Um, because that could make an impact on how much repair work we're able to do this spring and summer. As well, if we still have some remnant of that supply, I'm just guessing.
Instead of contracting out for company, just in-house use up.
If if we have, the staff has the capacity to to do that, and the skill set, I guess, I mean, I don't know. How much experience they have doing that, but maybe that, I don't know if that's an option, just throwing that out there as a question. Um, but I agree with Councilor MacArthur, I, at this point. Keeping our good roads good, so we're not spending money on them, will speed the amount of time that we can get to the. The cruddy roads, I think, so if we get, if this is a fif- fifteen to twenty-year addition to roads that we already have that are good, I think it's a no brainer. Just have to try and find a way to make it work.
Councilor Thompson, I see you shaking your head.
I agree, and I think that if that means going a little bit into that contingency, I think that's what it's there for. Um, do we know how much we would normally spend in sort of that spring fix-it mode?
I don't know, um, and I don't know that. Greg has a huge idea either.
Yeah.
I know he, when he got here, he's, he went pretty aggressively at it, um, at several fixes. He did say that, you know, in those few months after he got here, he. Was getting a lot and a lot of complaints, right? After the winter season and significant amount of water around here, we do tend to see a lot of complaints. Um, and he tried to, you know, do as many repairs as he could, I think, and I think the budget reflects that of. Using pretty much the entire line item for repair and maintenance. I don't know if there's. Um. Seeing if the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-one to twenty-two budget, or the, uh, the actual, I mean. So the budget for repair and maintenance, the line item, is sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars currently in this year's budget. Twenty-one to twenty-two, we spent thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Yeah, we're currently at, this year, this fiscal year, um, seventeen thousand dollars. Um. So you might expect to see, you know, in an average spring, probably more, or that about that amount again, another eighteen thousand dollars. Um, but I don't know for sure, and I I don't know, you know, how it's gonna look. I I know there's several spots, as Mayor King pointed out, that. We're aware of, and that Greg is is aware of, that need to be, that need to be addressed. Public Works staff do have, I believe, some supply, I don't know if they have a lot or what their supply looks like, but I do know they have some cold patch. Um, and they're, they're fine using it, especially once it dries out, uh, and it's. Will will be usable again. Um, I I know that there's a lot of spots that need more than cold patch, right? There there's a few holes that Greg has talked to me about, that we've gotten several complaints about, that it's like it. Like I can't put cold patch in, it's too big, it's too big of a pothole, it's too big of a depression, you know? And so then it's a question of do we try to fill it with gravel, but that, that's not great either. And do you dig out the whole section? For that, you do need a contractor, right, to fully dig out and repave a section.
We have to keep in mind that if we do decide to do slurry steel, uh, seal. Um. On some of our roads to keep them from getting worse, that there's gonna have to be some public education. And perspective, because people are going to want to know why we are paving those roads that are still considered good roads. And ignoring the roads that are so bad.
And that's fair too, because it, that slurry seal does come off as being repaved. When it first goes on, so I mean, uh, there might be some confusion there, like, why are we doing that?
So the public education piece, well, and I think, um. You know, working with Joel and having this plan and going out for a bid. That right there, getting your bids back is the first bit of information that's gonna be helpful, in like really where are we gonna be at where those fall? But I think it is a good opportunity, I just felt I needed to voice those concerns of like, I think it's important. That we still are able to address those after winter, like issues, crisis type issues, to some extent. So like Councilor Thompson mentioned, again, like, maybe that's what the contingency is for. Or make sure that Public Works has ten thousand dollars that they can use their discretion. Um, but I just wouldn't wanna, yes, we do need to invest, and we need to invest as heavily as we can. But I don't want that to mean an entire season with going without everything else. I mean.
Yeah.
I don't, okay.
And I think that just getting bids is a great start, so we know what we're looking at, and start the public education.
And Nathan, are you willing to help us with that public education piece too?
I can certainly try.
I think you need something simple, just like a FAQ document. And then we can publish that, and if people have more questions, then we update it. And I'm gonna, I'll get with you, we'll work on an infographic, and we can maybe map out some streets.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be.
I love infographics.
And I think people would, like, that's for some people, something to see. And I think people would, like that's for some people, something to see.
Well, and they can share it and email it and text it, it's super easy.
And we're always happy to answer questions or hear comments or opinions. If people wanna come join us at the meeting and talk about it, we're here.
Is the street survey on the website?
I don't know, that's my question, I'll check.
Is that part of an agenda packet or was it a separate?
I think it was a separate book.
The pavement study, it, I think it is on the website, yeah. Or it was at one time, so unless someone took it off, but I think it's there. Um, considering the discussion, is there anyone willing to make a motion?
Motion to approve city staff to issue a request for bids on an anticipated slurry seal project.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve city staff to issue a request for bids for an anticipated slurry seal project. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We will move on to letter of support for House Bill forty-one thirty-four. So as we've talked about before, Representative Elmer has a proposed bill that would directly allocate funding to cities, and it's for construction of infrastructure that's needed to serve affordable housing. So we brought forward to her and the group working on this that community home builders, one of their main, um, you know, barriers to moving forward with their project is the off-site improvements needed to Oak Street. With that, we met with Representative Elmer again and we said, you know, ultimately, Amity and the Amity City Council did everything they could to try to ease this in, right? To say, we'll do what we can, but we're limited. We don't have the ability to put that infrastructure in for them. We don't have the ability to waive the SDCs. This bill moving forward is, it's asking for direct allocations to cities, which would then be passed down through the, it's a public-private partnership. And Nathan and I worked and there was some, what would you call it, initial engineering that would expand what was, you know, the very minimal needed to allow those houses into one point four million dollars for off-site street improvements to Oak Street to accommodate, to reasonably accommodate those thirty-five houses coming in. House Bill thirty, forty-one thirty-four actually had its first public hearing yesterday. I listened to that, I think it was well received. But they can also, they'll accept more testimony up until tomorrow morning. So I drafted this letter and I'd love for council's input and/or approval to submit that. Thoughts on the bill as a whole or the city's, um, participation as well?
Who oversees that project? Does it get community home builders in partnership with the city or is the city heading the project if the funds come through?
Nathan, is it the city would be contracting? The city would have twenty-four months to get it accomplished.
As far as I knew, it was the city, yeah.
Yeah, um, one of the, I mean, high points, something that they highlighted is that when you do grant funding either to a nonprofit or a private entity or a city through an agency, then you have the process and the reimbursement. And so this is really streamlined in that it, it will be a, a co-signature, so we'll get a grant agreement. The private entity or the developer will have to sign their side of it, we'll have to sign our side of it. But then that money comes straight to us and we can fulfill our obligation within twenty-four months and then step away. And it's up to them, and then if, if the developer doesn't fulfill their end of the obligation, they have to pay the state back, or they have, you know, they're responsible to make sure that the city is paid for it. I'm guessing that's what you were getting at, is like, yes, we would be responsible for the construction of the infrastructure project.
And there's not additional anticipated costs with that or this pervasive because of the work that's already been done?
So it's one point four million dollars, we just gave a very like pre-engineered scope of work, and so it's not fully engineered. So with what we were granted, we would say, I mean, the hope is to get the full build out, the storm, the sidewalks, everything, but it would, our obligation would to provide the upgraded infrastructure. So it should be.
Not the surprise bill of the city then?
No, because we would be in charge of the project engineering, the bidding, the.
That just seems really low for what we need to do there, especially in the next twenty-four months. I mean, but I don't, I have no idea, that just sounds like a low number for the whole street. That, that would be my only concern, if that's, yeah, it just sounds low.
So would we just take the money that we got and put it as far as we could and?
I mean, at this point, what was initially asked to them when that project was approved was to add a couple inches on the side of the street so that two cars could pass or that a fire truck could get through. So I mean, with that in mind, when that number was given to Representative Elmer, it was because Nathan, I and Keller rough estimated that it could get done what we needed.
It, it definitely depends on the scope of what you're looking at, right? If you're looking at just completing what we asked, what the city asked community home builders to do, then it should be close to their price, but as a city, we'd like to do a little bit more than that to actually properly serve all the new homeowners down that, down Oak Avenue. And instead of just widening, that's making, so just widening Oak by a few feet. But I mean, there, there are some existing facilities there, right? There's sidewalk in some places that may be just fine.
Well, none of them are just fine, but. But yes, there are sidewalks that exist for sure.
And yeah, a lot of it's, it's tough to put a price on until you know what's there, right? Like if there's storm, storm infrastructure there or not, maybe there's none, I, I don't know for sure.
Well, first talking about that end section that's, needs to be widened, I'm assuming.
So they, this is for off-street, off-site street improvements. The developers would still have to do all the street widening on their frontage, their own sidewalks. It would just be from the end of their obligation to nursery, which is a big stretch.
It's a big stretch.
So a little bit of perspective, if you think the SCA grant will put sidewalks in front of the whole school and that was three hundred thousand.
It's just sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it would be a matter of, you know, the bill has to pass. We would have to get a grant agreement, we'd have to look at it, we would have to look at our obligations under that contract and say, can we do this? What can we get done in twenty-four months? But I don't see any reason why we couldn't expend that amount of money and have adequate street infrastructure to accommodate that development. I mean, I don't, it's a little late to ask to double it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just, yeah.
I think it's a valid concern.
I'm not no expert at all, it's just, just my new jerk reaction is all.
I'm excited to ask and see what we get and see how far it takes us.
Is there anyone that's opposed to submitting a letter, testimony? So if I have a motion and this is approved, Nathan and I will get that in tonight so that it is where it needs to be before eight AM tomorrow morning. There'll also be a work session on the bill on February thirteenth. So maybe not in person, but I will be observing that, um, in there if necessary. And then I'll keep contact with Representative Elmer as this moves forward, just to keep, um, counsel in the know. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the submission of a letter to the Oregon State Legislature in support of House Bill forty-one thirty-four, Housing Oregon's Word of the Year.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. The next item is in addition to our agenda. This is a temporary OLCC license application for the Common Cup, holding some events, bubbly brunch, and there is a March, April and May date that they're applying for. Do I have an approval or a denial or any questions or discussion?
I saw in her application that she's gonna apply for, I can't remember what it was called, but something a little more, there we go, a little more permanent, do we know when?
That'll, it'll come before council next month.
Next month's that one, well, okay.
I have no objection, it sounds like similar requests that they had last year, so it sounds reasonable.
Okay, um, I'll just ask for like a motion to approve with all the details in there.
Motion to approve temporary liquor license application for the Common Cup located at five one six South Trade Street, Suite one oh three.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve a temporary liquor license application for the Common Cup located at five sixteen South Trade Street, Suite one oh three. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We will move into department reports. And we have Nathan, you're up first.
Yeah, um, we've already talked about a lot of my items, um, just as, as they touched on the other agenda items from tonight. One thing to note, though, the annual resident survey this year had eighty-one responses with some great feedback. I think that was very well appreciated in council's goal-setting session, which I felt went very well and answered a lot of those, we've not answered, but addressed a lot of those concerns and, and comments as well. Hopefully will give us a, a good path forward. We'll be working on kind of prioritizing and touching up the, that goal list, if you will, in our next work session, I believe. Sorry, it doesn't, it feels like it's been a long time, but also not any time at all since we just met on Saturday. This month was a long and challenging one for Public Works. They had several issues with freezing temperatures at the water treatment plant, as well as the wastewater plant. They, they have successfully navigated the, those challenges and they, um, they, they handled everything that came their way, but it certainly took a lot of, a lot of overtime. Uh, and so they are recovering. They, they had a lot thrown at them. Couple weeks ago, maybe a week ago, there, there was a tree in the Amity City Park that started falling over on its own and decided just to, to lie down. And so we had an arborist come out and, and cut it down so that it could, we could guarantee which way it fell and sort of letting it do it on its own. That tree has been cut into twenty-two foot sections. I reached out to the Yamhill Valley Historical Society, who has a mill and is interested in wood, especially with a historical note to it, like wood from the Amity City Park. They were very, very excited by the opportunity to, to come get the tree. They won't be able to come grab it until that area dries out though, they can't. Most people can't get big machinery back in there without just sinking. And so we'll give that a little while, but they should be coming to pick up that tree. Ice storm caused closures at City Hall for a few days. City Hall staff worked very quickly and effectively to, to get back up, back on track, uh, within a few days. But if there was any complaints or concerns from that, please let me know. I, I think everything's handled great. Uh, the final, the final thing that I have is just that with the, the DLCD grant agreement, McGray from the COG, the Community Development Director, has offered to help the city with the, with an RFP, putting together an RFP for the consultant side. And so as we've decided to move forward with that grant agreement, also move forward with McGray to, to develop that RFP that we can put out for consultants to answer. Does anybody have any questions for me? Anything that you're wanting to ask about?
Was there anything we needed to look at for the website?
Ooh, yeah, um, so the website is largely finished on Civic Plus's end. Now it's mostly staff getting trained. It still looks and feels very bare bones though, I think I sent out a link to what they gave me. I, I can resend it and just to make sure that everybody has it. It still just strikes me as very bare bones. I don't know if we, you know, just have some things missing or, or what, but we can definitely keep working on coming up with ways to, to develop that further. It has a lot of functionality, a lot of flexibility with what we do with it, which means more creativity on my side, which is sometimes harder. But, so if you have ideas, if you're like, oh, a picture would look great on this page, or, oh, you know, can we put the words over here and bold them, then let me know, there, there's all of that that I can do and more. But, yeah.
Thank you for that reminder. Um, I actually have a list from checking out the website, but I forgot that I had made a list, so. It sounds like though Nathan is inviting all of us to schedule a time with him if we want a phone call or by email or to meet with him to look it over.
I may have missed it, so I think the last link I got for it was linked there on the website.
I think that's what it is. That's what we got.
Let's see, if you, if you were able to go into any of the department pages?
No.
Okay, then you may have just have like the front page. And that one I sent out a while ago, let me, let me send you a, I'll just send out an updated one with another question to please give feedback. Especially right now, it's a lot of time for staff and I to, uh, to learn how to edit it and use it. Like I said, there's a lot there, but sometimes it's also overwhelming.
Anything else for Nathan? Uh, Tasha, did you have anything to add to your report?
We have the Public Works Report, Library Report, City Engineering Report, City Attorney Planning Billing Report by the COG. Any questions on those? Um, I had a question for Nathan earlier. There was, um, some general counsel attorney fees on this last billing cycle. So we're just gonna check in and make sure, since we got that contract for up to five hours a month, just make sure. just make sure like that that, those are being used first and ask if it can be noted, like, you've used up your five, this was four additional, or maybe there was a mistake, but just look into that. It's our cheaper option for city attorney and law services, and so it's fine if it's necessary. I just wanna make sure that the billing is correct. Okay, if there's nothing else for department reports, we'll move on to business from the mayor and city councillors. We'll start with Council President Dyke.
Hi, um, my apologies for not being there in person tonight, I'm juggling. I wanted to report on Amity Day Committee. We have picked our weekend that we are hoping to do our first annual event, and that is the Weekend of the Pancake Breakfast, which is July twenty-sixth, through twenty-eighth, so we're hoping on doing an event probably on July twenty-seventh. So that is our tentative plan at this moment. More details to come.
Awesome. Exciting to hear.
Yes. And people are welcome to join us at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday at six o'clock.
Any questions for Counsel Dyke? Counsel Bajorgas? Counsel McCarthy?
Nothing to report, nothing to add.
Counsel Shields?
Nothing for me.
Counsel Thompson?
Um, just to report that our tourism committee had our second meeting and that we're making good progress. I think going through a strategic plan and getting that set into place. So I'm excited to finish that up.
Off the top of your head, do you know when the next meeting is, the date of it?
The twentieth.
Thank you.
Six thirty.
Sure, I have it somewhere. I'll be there.
Great.
Okay. We will move on to mayor's report and final comments. I don't have much tomorrow. Nathan and I, I'm assuming you're going as well to Lafayette? Yes. We're attending the Small Cities LOC meeting in Lafayette. Um, I also had a note about the city-county dinner. Our councillor is going to be able to attend? Do we have, I hadn't checked in about our soups, but, okay, um. The only other thing I had is I had a last minute addition that was asked to be public comment for the record, so I'm just gonna share that now. It came through, I emailed it to Tasha, so it will get put into the packet. But it says, Rachel, this is Mary Jackson at two oh seven Roth. I wanted to attend tonight's city council to comment for the record that the citizens on the one hundred, two hundred block of Roth Avenue are very grateful to Mona and Nathan for being instrumental in having our trash and recycle services restored by Recology. Big thank you to both for their quick response to our dilemma. I'm not feeling well tonight, I hope you don't mind representing me. Thank you, Mary. So.
Very good.
Yes, um, thank you for that. I know that sometimes it's our partners and not under the city's control, but I think all of our staff is really great at reaching out and doing what they can, so we echo Mary's thanks, um, for that. Like, I might be forgetting something, but, um, I'm just gonna say that's all I have for this evening. Anything else for the good of the order? I'll just also say I'm very thankful for these microphones. I think they're gonna work out great. Can you hear better out there? Yay, okay. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a final motion of the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys.